Hello, Westland. I'm Emily Baumann, running to serve you for a second term on your city council. In November 2023, you first elected me to start right away, to complete a previously vacated term, and to serve a full two-year term. This year, I am asking for your support and your vote to serve a four-year term. As someone who believes in being better every day and learning everything I can about what I am working on, I immediately set to work learning everything I could about being a better servant for the residents of Westland. One of the things I focused on was the differences and benefits of "I" versus "we" as it relates to council and serving you. As a "we," council worked with the mayor and administration and passed two budgets that did not add taxes or rely on millages to be introduced or passed in order to maintain and improve services to the city. As a council and administration working together, "we" have added police officers and firefighters to better serve the city and reduce response time. We have also worked to maintain those officers beyond some of the grants we have depended on. With the mayor's budget this year, we, as a council, approved over $600,000 be added into Westland's rainy day fund to better be prepared for unexpected or emergencies out of our control. The largest add to the fund in many years and bringing us, as a city, much closer to the recommended levels. All of these wins speak to good, fiscally conservative use of your taxpayer dollars that we, as a body council, are responsible for. We are also looking forward to the opening of Fire Station Two and the start of Fire Station Four. There are many other things that happened in the last two years that we worked on, but there's more to come. In the "I" category, I was responsible for listening to you, asking questions, challenging decisions, and being a voice and advocate for residents and businesses that make Westland a desirable place to live, work, and play. Some areas I want to share where I made an impact. Since January 2024, I have served as the Westland Liaison for the Nankin Transit Commission. Nanskin Transit provides transportation for our residents over 50 so they can get to their medical appointments, or grocery shopping, or other needs. As a commission, we have worked to maintain the low fares for this multi-city benefit. That is not easy to do in this economy with prices going up around us, but it has been important in order to keep providing this service to our seniors. Other areas that I was responsible for was to take advantage of the education for elected leaders from Michigan Municipal League. Not only did I achieve Level One, I am just shy of completing Level Two. Plus, I am currently serving on their Economic Development and Land Use Committee in order to keep a pulse on what is happening at the state and federal levels that could affect us here locally. I also served on the Legislative Council of SEMCOG, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. Being on these committees means Westland has a voice at the table to show support or opposition to legislation that has direct impact to us. I have been honored to represent you. Two years ago, I told you that I could and I would take action on areas to make Westland a thriving city. I said I would look for ways to lower taxes, make myself available as we work together for shared goals, work so Westland's current assets in business, community organizations, and cultural events be even more successful. I said I would work on the right things and help create a vision where this community brings in and supports families and businesses. In my two years on council, I have done what I said I would and know that my job isn't finished. Working on where I can be better and working with the council, mayor, and administration, I am helping to lead in the right areas to make Westland a thriving community. Experience and leadership matter. Not only do I have the experience I brought to council, I now have the experience of being on council, showing that I work for you. In the coming months, you are going to hear me talk more about one key area, and that is arts and culture, one of the critical pillars that helps make a community thrive, and I will be leading the charge to improve this and make Westland even more desirable to live, work, play, and visit. Voters who want to see Westland not just thrive but to flourish are voting to reelect Emily Baumann. You can read more about me at emilybaumann.com. My telephone number is 734-224-3679, and my email is emily@emilybaumann.com.
Hello, my name is Jim Hart, and I'm one of the candidates running for reelection to city council this year. I've had the chance to meet many of you at your home or during the extensive work I've done here in the city over the past seven years. As you know, there's four seats up for reelection, and you have the opportunity and challenging task of going over the candidate's qualifications so you can make an informed choice. About myself, I'm a 15-year United States Army veteran who proudly served our nation both here and overseas. I joined the Army after graduating high school. His public service is not only calling, but a family tradition. Shortly after joining the Army, I married Linda, my high school sweetheart, and after 29 years of marriage and counting, we've been blessed with three children. I continue to be very happy that we chose to raise them here in Westland and in Westland Public Schools. Education is important to me. I hold a bachelor's in Business Management and a master's degree from the University of Michigan, Dearborn. In my professional life, I own a small technical consulting business and work full-time as a senior engineer for Verizon. I have almost 30 years of leadership and management experience in public, private, and nonprofit sectors and have been nationally recognized for my accomplishments. I've been published in the Construction Association of Michigan magazine for my work on helping to drive technical innovation, supporting the rebirth of Detroit. All this means that I have years of extensive experience in professional business and personnel management. These are the qualities you look for from a city council candidate. I'm applying for the job, and I am here to bring my skills to bear for the betterment of the city. I'm not doing this to build my resume, I'm offering my resume to you. I have a long history of volunteerism and civic service. Here in Westland, I served on the Board of Directors for the Westland Chamber of Commerce, which is a local business and community advocacy organization that represents Westland businesses. I'm also a proud alumni of the Westland Area J.C.'s and served as a president of that organization in 2015. I was proud to put Westland on the map and recognize as one of the top 10 presidents across the United States. On the council, I've been able to bring consensus and share my experience with my colleagues. I was honored to be selected to serve as council president for four years. Through my years of work here in the city, I've developed good working relationships with the administration, and that will help us as we continue to forge the road ahead. This is a pivotal time, not only in our city but as a nation. Our home buying, shopping, and commerce landscapes have greatly changed. This is a national trend. I've been working with our adapting marketplace for years, and I know the direction successful cities are going. We can also take advantage of these trends. We can adapt now with the market and our environment to get out in front and poison our city for success. To be successful, we will need to rethink how we approach development and residential landscapes and how we view fixed retail. Placemaking and neighborhood planning are essential to this change. I'm an experienced team player, and I've been on track record of being able to bring consensus to large groups of competing interests and ideals. I realize that we all want the same thing, but we all have different approaches on how to get there. As a great leader told me, "It will be amazing what we accomplish as long as we don't care who gets the credit." For this growth to occur and be successful, you're going to need candidates who have a proven track record in building organizations. You hire someone with good references and a demonstrated ability to do the job. Having a positive attitude is good, but you need to have the aptitude as well. Many of you told me that expanded services are wanted and needed, and I couldn't agree more. We have made extensive progress in retaining and recruiting our first responders. Clean and safe streets, along with active business growth, are the three pillars required to support continued housing value and thriving community that attracts new home buyers. I'm proud to announce that we have worked double the size of our ordinance department to fight blight and enforce clean neighborhoods. For years, I've been a strong advocate for our city, and I've always conducted myself in a manner that continues to bring credit to our residents and our community. I'm a Westland homeowner, father, husband, and I have plenty of skin in the game. As you can see, I'm fully invested in our city. Finally, I'd like to thank you all for your time, either on the porch, on the phone, in the council chambers, or watching this video. You really have a tough job ahead. I applaud your civic action by going through all of these presentations. As always, I can be reached by cell at 734-709-5307, or my email at jim@citizensforjimhart.com, or online where I've posted a great deal of additional information with my professional resume. This can be found at citizensforjimhart.com. Thanks for your time.
Hello, Westland. I'm Delano Hornbuckle, and it is truly an honor to stand before you once again as I seek to continue serving as your Westland City Councilman. Over the past three years, we made meaningful progress in transforming our community. From safe streets to stronger neighborhoods, we laid a strong foundation, but we're just getting started. My mission remained clear: to keep building a safer, stronger, and more vibrant Westland for your family and mines. When I first joined city council, I discovered that some neighborhoods were still without streetlights, and that was unacceptable. Streetlights aren't just about visibility. They're about safety, security, and peace of mind. One of my first actions was to advocate for installing lights where they were desperately needed, because every resident deserves to feel safe right outside their front door. As a husband and father, the safety of our city and the strength of our community are deeply personal to me. That's why when the opportunity came to invest in our parks, I didn't hesitate to support it, because safe, welcoming space for our families aren't just luxury, they're essential. During my time on city council, I championed programs that uplifted and empowered our residents from supporting youth enrichments to extending access to food accessibility to giving our kids the opportunity to explore places like Washington, D.C. These investments aren't about building a better tomorrow, because when you invest in people, we secure the future of Westland. Now let me share some of the progress we made together. We added 13 full-time firefighters and paramedics, a direct investment in the safety of our residents and the first responders who protect us. We renewed our mental health partnership, ensuring Westland police are supported by social worker and substance use specialists when it matters most. We broke ground on a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire station with another one on the way, bringing modern technology and training facilities to our city. Invested millions into our parks, upgrading equipment, and creating a safe, fun space for everyone to enjoy. We improved roads, upgraded infrastructures, and launched the Safe Street for All plan to reduce accidents and protect pedestrians. This isn't just talk, it's a record of action, a record of service, a record I'm proud to stand on and ready to build on. But this campaign isn't just about what we've done, it's about where we're going. As your councilman, I will continue to be visible and accessible. My cellphone is always on and always will be on. Meet and listen to residents. I will continue to be in the community, talking with you, hearing your concerns, and helping solve real problems. Working for a better infrastructure. Families shouldn't worry about flooding basements or power outlets after every storm. Stand up for safe neighborhoods. Support policy that reflects working families, protect public services, and use your tax dollars wisely. This election isn't about title, it's about trust, and I hope I've earned yours. So today, I ask for your vote, your support, and your voice. Let's continue building a safer, stronger, and more vibrant Westland for your family and mines. Stay connected with me and see the great things happening around our city by following me on Facebook at Councilman Delano Hornbuckle. I'm Councilman Delano Hornbuckle, and I look forward to earning your vote for Westland City Council in this year's election. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michael Londo. I'm a lifelong resident of Westland, and I've had the honor of serving as Westland's ninth mayor and as a member of our city council. In the August primary, residents across Westland showed strong support for my candidacy. That encouragement motivates me to keep building on the progress we've started and to continue delivering results for our community. Residents have told me loud and clear, "You want a city council and administration that listens, collaborates, and delivers results." That's the approach I've always taken. During my time as mayor, we tackled longstanding neighborhood challenges with fresh solutions. For example, I remember walking down Hawthorne Street and hearing from neighbors worried about cracked sidewalks. That's why we launched the city's largest sidewalk replacement program ever, improving walkability and safety at no additional cost to homeowners. We also worked with city council to allocate $1.25 million to update nine neighborhood parks across every corner of our city. A critical needs assessment guided those investments, ensuring we prioritized the parks most in need and delivered real improvements families could enjoy. We brought back curbside bulk leaf pickup, restoring a service families relied on and asked for. In neighborhoods where speeding was a problem, such as Florence and Hanlon near Rotary Park, we introduced the Speed Hump Pilot Program to slow traffic and improve safety, a program now expanded to more neighborhoods. We also advanced pedestrian safety plans to make our streets safer for walkers and bikers across the city. These initiatives weren't about headlines, they were about making life safer and better, and our Department of Public Service workers were key to making it happen. Strong neighborhoods rely on strong public safety. Police, fire, and EMS deserve more than praise. They need proper staffing, training, and resources. In the winter of 2023, we laid the foundation for a new fire station to replace our oldest facility, including a regional training tower for first responders across the community. Federal and state funding supported the project, and while construction began after I left office, I'm proud to have initiated this critical investment. Our police station is aging and needs more than a remodel. It requires either a rebuild or a major expansion. Updated facilities mean better efficiency, faster response times, and stronger protection for residents. Residents have told me, "Westland needs a modern recreation center." They're right. A facility that offers year-round fitness, wellness, and aquatic programs will help retain families and attract the next generation to our city. From swim lessons to fitness classes, from youth sports to adult wellness programs, a modern rec center will provide opportunities for all ages. We also developed plans for the Annex at Nankin, a community space for concerts, events, and outdoor fun. While that project is set to open this fall under a new name, the vision remains the same: to strengthen our shop-and-dine district, support local businesses, and create a vibrant public destination for everyone to enjoy. Over the years, I faced baseless attacks and tended to distract from real progress. While many in my position might have responded with criticism, I've chosen a different path: listening, collaborating, and focusing on results. That dedication allowed me to achieve outcomes while maintaining strong, productive relationships with colleagues and city staff, relationships I'm proud to say I still have today. Yes, I have differences of opinion, but that's healthy, because diversity of thought handled with respect leads to better ideas and stronger results for residents. I'm not here to be an adversary, I'm here to be a partner, to build on the progress we've started, and that continues even while I've been out of office these past two years. This election is not about going backwards, it's about continuing progress with leadership you can trust. You've heard a lot in this election about unity or a shared vision. I agree, unity matters, but unity doesn't mean lining up behind endorsements or one person's agenda. Unity means bringing together diverse voices, asking tough questions, and making decisions that serve residents. I'm running as an independent, experienced leader. I've balanced multimillion-dollar budgets, led citywide initiatives, and worked side by side with residents to solve problems. What Westland needs now is proven leadership, steady hands, not inexperience or groupthink. Together, we can strengthen public safety, improve quality of life in every neighborhood, and ensure financial stability for the future. I'd be honored to be one of your four choices this November. Let's bring back leadership with a proven track record of success. Let's build a stronger, safer, and thriving Westland together. To learn more or connect with me directly, call me at 734-223-0200, or follow along on Facebook at Michael Londo for Westland. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Antoinette Martin, and I'm running for Westland City Council in the August 5th primary. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to introduce myself and share why I am running. I have proudly called Westland my home for over 30 years and have moved here in 1988. Like many, my life has seen changes. During COVID, I became a widow. I recently got a new roommate, my 91-year-old mother. It's really been fun having her with me. And while having my mother live with me has brought a lot of joy, it's also taught me a lot about resilience and how, with the right support from your community, you can handle almost anything. Professionally, I hold a bachelor's degree in Business Administration, and I majored in accounting. I'm a retired financial advisor with 30 years of experience, and over my career, I've held federal's License Series VII, the Michigan State License 63 and 66, as well as insurance license, health, life, and code, and lastly, variable contracts. I've also completed all the coursework for Certified Financial Planning, and my education continued annually for 30 years. With all this experience and education, I will be able to promise you that I will make sure that the city will always stay financially sound. The city council race includes many candidates with advanced degrees like myself, but I believe my background stands out because it's backed with real-world experience. I didn't just get my degrees recently, I've had it for decades. I built my own business from the ground up and successfully sold it in 2018. Currently, as a retirement physician, I work at the Rouge Plant for the Henry Ford Museum, where I'm surrounded by hard-working UAW members, and I am honored to recently have received the endorsement of the UAW. I talk about my sense of community and how it sets me apart from candidates. I didn't start doing charity work because I decided to run for council, I've been doing it for years. I was honored to be named Westland Citizen of the Year and recently received multiple Service Above Self Awards from the Westland Rotary. Sometimes, this meant staying up till 2:00 a.m., working a charity poker night to raise funds for scholarships for Westland schools, and also sponsor the Salvation Army Summer Camp for Children. I've served on many boards and commissions, including the Library Board and the Brownsfield Redevelopment Board. While serving, we were able to keep the budget under control, which later led to the expansion of our library. The tax incentives from Brownsfield helped bring new businesses to Westland, including MJR Theater and Tim Hortons. As president of the Westland Rotary, one project I'm especially proud of was leading a partnership with VOTEC, which built Rotary Park Pavilion. I've established partnerships between the Westland Rotary and the Chamber of Commerce for the annual Taste Fest event, and I was also part of the investment team that helps secure Rotary's financial future so we can continue to do good work in our city. Now I'd like to share why I'm running for city council. I don't just live in a city, I live in my home, my neighborhood, and my community. I want to see Westland, my community, continue to thrive. Recently, after watching city council meetings, it's clear to me that city council needs stronger leadership, more focus, and better direction. I won't say much more about that, but if you haven't been watching, I encourage you to go to YouTube, search Westland City Council, and draw your own conclusions. I am also running because I strongly support Mayor Coleman and his administration. I believe there's a lot of talent in City Hall, and it's time we empowered the talent to do its job. I'm not here to be a rubber stamp. I am here to bring my financial expertise, to do due diligence necessary, to make informed decisions, and keep our city moving forward. As a city council member, I can promise you this: I will work as hard as I can, and I will use all my skills and talents to make the city better. And as my husband would say, let me repeat, "I will use all my talents and skills to make the city better." Thank you for your time, and vote for Antoinette Martin on August 5th.
I'm Lakeisha Maxwell, a candidate for Westland City Council. I'm committed to progress and committed to community. For the past 15 years, I have been proud to call Westland home. I have dedicated my time to serving others through leadership roles in our city. I am running for city council because I believe in the power of strategic leadership, financial responsibility, and community-driven progress. I bring decades of experience in budgeting, finance, and project management to city government. As an appointed official in Westland, I have worked to create opportunities for families. I remain committed to making this city a better place. My goals include economic development to create jobs and support local businesses, enhance job training for youth and young adults, supporting our veterans and their families with access to essential resources, and enhancing community engagement to foster a stronger sense of unity. I am ready to bring fresh perspectives, sound financial decision-making, and a deep commitment to Westland's future. I ask for your support, your ideas, and your vote as we shape a brighter future for Westland. Live well, be well, Vote Maxwell.
Hello, my name is Josh Powell, and I'm running for Westland City Council. I'm running to serve the residents of Westland because I think our city is in dire need of revitalization. Like you, I've seen the slow creep of our property taxes, the ever-increasing cost of utilities, and the unacceptable number of empty buildings and lots in our business districts. As a veteran of the Army, a small business owner, and a leader in our community, I have the knowledge and experience to advocate for a better future for our city and to make our city a more desirable destination for our children and grandchildren. We are at a critical time in our city's history, where we can either manage the decline or remake ourselves into a city for the future. With that in mind, I would like to present to you my plan to revitalize Westland for the 21st century and beyond. First, let's address the elephant on Warren Road, the Westland Mall. It is no secret that the Westland Mall is not what it used to be, and changing shopping habits have affected malls all over the country. But plenty of malls in our area have survived and even thrived in this new environment, and our historic mall has a unique and significant history in our city that I believe is worth preserving. I have a plan for the city to partner with the ownership of the mall to make it a destination for the community again, by converting one of the empty anchor stores into a community center that residents have been missing for so long. This plan would drive more traffic and visitors to our shop-and-dine district while at the same time saving the city money on building a community center by utilizing existing infrastructure. And instead of costly loans, we could pay for it by giving the mall the property tax breaks it has so long been asking for it to repair and update the facilities it already has. This plan is both fiscally responsible and good for the business community long-term. Second, we have got to make Westland more competitive to new investment by bringing our property taxes under control and creating a more competitive regulatory environment. While cities all around us attract new businesses and investment, Westland continuously loses out to those cities where the property is actually more expensive but who have lower millages and less onerous regulations. We should have an advantage in attracting new investment, but we are holding ourselves back, and I want to help get the city government out of the way. Third, we must reduce utility costs and make the city more livable for residents and current business owners. I have long been a strong advocate of building a water tower and water storage infrastructure for the city, which would allow the city to buy water when it's cheaper at night, to disperse to residents and businesses when they actually use it during the day, and give us all the peace of mind that we can provide clean water for our residents in an emergency. This is something surrounding communities have done successfully and saved the residents millions of dollars a year in proven costs. So it's a proven plan, and there's already a known blueprint we can follow. You may be asking, "Who is Josh Powell?" Well, before I became the candidate for Westland City Council, I've worked in IT for 16 years. I started a company called GLP Computer Solutions, which I later sold when I took a job offer at a Fortune 500 company, and I have one son who recently graduated from John Glenn High School. Prior to that, I used the GI Bill at Liddonwood University, where I received my degree in information technology. I served as a military police officer in the Missouri Army National Guard and the Michigan Army National Guard after relocating here in 2010. My life has taught me to pay attention to how people are treated, and in 2020, I decided to go back to school at Purdue University and graduated with a degree in criminal justice, and then attended law school in an effort to help people in my community I felt had been treated wrongly. And it was then that I saw a need to get more involved in my local government. I want to see my son and future generations of Westland have even more opportunities than I do, not less, as I'm sure all of you do as well. I'm afraid that won't happen with the current trajectory we are on. Right now, I feel the city is just managing the decline, but we can do better for ourselves, and we must do better for our children. The city needs fresh faces with new ideas in the government to shake things up, and I believe I'm the right person for the job, and I'm asking for your vote for both the partial term and the full term so we can get started right away. Do you have questions for me? You can go to my website at powellforwestland.com. That's P-O-W-E-L-L, the number for westland.com, or call or text me directly at 734-234-8135. Thank you for your time, thank you for your vote, and together, we can revitalize Westland. Thank you for your time, thank you for your vote, and together, we can revitalize Westland.
Hello, fellow Westland residents and thank you for taking the time to watch this program to become a more informed voter in this year's City Council election. I would first like to tell you a little about myself and my experience. My name is John Sullivan. I am a husband, father of three, and grandfather of two. All three of my children are now adults and college graduates. I've been married to my wife Sharon for 30 years. Sharon has been a schoolteacher in the Wayne Westland School District for the past 27 years and she serves Westland on the Parks and Recreation Board and on the Westland Historical Commission. I am a 30-year licensed and practicing attorney and local small business owner. I was elected four times to serve on the legislative body of our county, serving as a Wayne County Commissioner for eight years. I currently serve the city of Westland on the Youth Assistance Advisory Board as a youth mentor, on the city's Tax Board of Review, and on the Local Development Finance Authority Board. I am also a member of the Westland Historical Society and have spent countless hours volunteering at our historical village and at many events throughout our community. I am running for a seat on your City Council because I want to bring positive change to our city. Throughout my career as an attorney and in public service, I have always worked hard to make sure that everyone has a voice and that all people are treated with fairness, honesty, and dignity. Because of my experience and dedication to our community, I have earned the support of many local leaders and organizations for my campaign, including Mayor Kevin Coleman, City Council President Mike McDermott, State Representative Peter Hersberg, County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, the Westland Firefighters Union, and numerous other unions, community leaders, former mayors, and organizations. I invite you to visit my website at www.sullivanforwestland.com to see a full list of endorsements. I would also like to take a minute to tell you about some of the things that I find important and would like to work on as your next City Councilman. First, I would like to invest in all of Westland's neighborhoods to improve our infrastructure and increase property values for residents across the community. We need to continue the work of repaving neighborhood roads, upgrading water and sewer systems, and ensuring pedestrian safety and walkability by fixing broken sidewalks and connecting sidewalk gaps. Second, I want to ensure that we adequately fund our police and fire departments to make sure that they are fully staffed with the newest technology and equipment available. These services are vital to decreasing crime, increasing property values, and making sure that we as residents are safe and receive proper response times to our emergency calls. Also, I would like to see the city of Westland invest more in its parks and recreation programs. I know that amenities like beautiful, well-kept parks can go a long way in attracting new residents to our community and improving the quality of life for everyone who lives here. We need to increase investments in our Parks and Recreation Department to make sure that we maintain proper upkeep and cleaning of our parks and to continue to add new recreational opportunities for our residents. I also plan to work with the city administration to explore opportunities to bring back a city recreation center and public swimming pool for residents to enjoy. These are just a few of the many things that I would like to work on to improve our community and quality of life here in Westland. And again, please go to my website at www.sullivanforwestland.com to learn more about me and my plans to help make our community a great place to live. Thank you again for taking the time to better inform yourself about the candidates running for City Council this year and I humbly ask you to provide me with the opportunity to help improve our community by casting one of your votes for John Sullivan.